Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Belzak?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Vaughn?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Gustafson?
Here.
Plistic?
Present.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. It takes us to item five, questions, comments, announcements of a general nature. Does anybody in the audience have any questions they'd like to bring up now prior to our getting deeply into our agenda? If not, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. We're talking about the Administrative Finance Committee meeting of the whole for February 17, 2021. And I'm going to also include the Administrative Finance Committee meeting of the whole for February 23, 2021. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Plistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Those two sets of minutes have been approved. It takes us to the City Council Minutes of March 15, 2021. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Shower. Any questions? If none, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Plistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Those minutes have been approved. It moves to number seven, receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have any communications for the council? Mary?
I've received a lot of communications lately. First up regarding the new building at Brookhaven Plaza on the corner of Plainfield and Cass Avenue. Drew Kelly wrote suggesting that perhaps adding ivy to the building along the side of the more, you know, side that faces out, that would make it more appealing. I've passed this information on to Dan Gombeck and city staff to take it under advisement. I know that there's a lot of evolving in the building right now, like the awnings went up and whatnot. So I think people, you know, need to, let's wait to see how it all looks. But that was a suggestion. He sent some photos and we appreciate, you know, the input always from residents, and I did pass that along. I have received several communications regarding the Steak 'n Shake property on 75th Street. I have forwarded them on to our city planner and city administrator so that that can be shared with the packet for planning and zoning. But all of them are resoundly against having a zoning change to Steak 'n Shake allowing cannabis dispensary. And also a planning and zoning committee meeting this week where cannabis dispensary possibility zoning would be on Steak 'n Shake. Another item on the agenda is the proposed development Darian Heights Residence at 2305 Socal Court. That is in my ward five. It's on the south side of 55 off of Frontage Road there, off of Lamont Road. And it will be presented to the Planning and Zoning Committee to build a apartment, 68-unit luxury rental unit. And the developer and I have talked several times. And he has met with the homeowners associations of both the apartment, not the, I'm sorry, the condo building and the townhomes. And I've received pretty positive feedback from those residents on their discussions with him. And I'm encouraging people to attend the planning and zoning meeting on Wednesday if they have further questions with that. I do plan to attend and be there and report back to any of my constituents about that. And I suggest to people viewing, if they have questions about that, to please seek that information out on our website for the planning and zoning packet. And lastly, I did receive a communication from a resident, Kevin Drum, who had basically asked why, you know, he lives in that community, but he was wondering why me as his alderman don't send him cards or mailings specifically. He came from a community in Western Springs where I guess they would have communications. And I did get back to him and let him know that, you know, we're trying to, you know, run a lean budget. And we do a lot of our communications electronically and that I'm always available to him. But, you know, that's just something I know, you know, in the past, we obviously with COVID, cut out the newsletter, that kind of mailing. But, you know, I think there's still a lot of people that miss getting something in the mail from the city or from their representative. So just bringing that up again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mayor. I received communication from Henry Filstra from the 8,000 block of Farmendale. The concern he brings to my attention is that he received the Chicago Tribune Inside Shopper. As many residents might get that every Monday or Tuesday morning wrapped in a red bag. He's called them a few times to tell them to stop. You'll see these newspapers end up on top of storm sewers, storm drains. I got one stuck in the snow blower actually back in February, it just froze in. So he was asking what could be done to stop delivery to his house or if there's anything to, I don't know, to minimize it. I know they want to get, you know, advertisements, this and that, which is fair. But I think a lot of residents who put the effort in to say they don't want it anymore, they don't want it in their yard, they don't like seeing it clogging up the storm sewer, what would be a route or was a plan that we could come up with potentially to help him or any other residents that might have a similar issue or concern. And that is all.
Alderman Vaughn?
Or Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got three communications here this evening. I've got one from Dennis Kelly in my ward, former videographer. In the booth here before the technology evolved and he was a little less manpower. Just mentioned he'd been here for 20, 20 years doing it and didn't really get a goodbye, if you will. So I don't know exactly what might be looking for there. I got a Marianne Fogarty stopped me regarding the zoning for Steak 'n Shake. You know, not in favor of the rezoning of that. And Linda Lay on Clermont is in favor of it. So that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Vaughn?
I have one communication from Jolene Labides and Bruce Burrell. They are against the rezoning of Steak 'n Shake.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
No one else? Mary?
One thing I forgot. I did have a resident inquire, I guess the village of Westmont is doing compost collection, I think at their municipal services facility, and was wondering if there's anything like that. We could start something like that in our community.
Actually, actually, the woman who runs Good Works, they develop a compost box over there behind Eisenhower Junior High on the old tennis courts. When I visited there last year, they develop compost and I think they let people come in and borrow that compost.
Well, if we could, if that's, if we can verify that and get their permission, I'd love to see us promote that as we head into the, you know,
I think that's what Cynthia McGann.
Yeah, Cynthia McGann, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could contact Cynthia to see if she's, I would assume they're starting to do that now.
Yeah, like they're, because they have, Cynthia and Good Works has a garden at the back of Mount Carmel. And then we harvest stuff for the food pantry. And so they're just kind of prepping the ground. But yeah, that would be, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, I'll write myself a note and I'll give Cynthia a call.
Great.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I had a neighbor inform me too that the city of Woodridge, who originally turned down the marijuana selling, is having a non-binding referendum tomorrow. So they're relooking at all this too. So that's going to be more competition for us, right from the Woodridge. As you know, Westmont is already getting one in. And I had another neighbor ask what happened to the electronic sign over at Dunkin' Donuts?
What happens?
What happened to it? It's not put the electronic sign. The last they heard that was an electronic sign going up. And I informed them that it got turned down. So they were a little disappointed.
Yeah. Okay. Takes us to the mayor's report. I'd like to give you an update on vaccines. As you know, I meet monthly, every Monday with the DuPage County Health Department via Zoom. As may if you know, the governor announced the development of a bridge program within Phase Four of his Restore Illinois program. I'm very happy to say that I'm part of the committee that developed the proposal that we sold to the governor's office that he built into the bridge program. As it was stated by the governor, the bridge program is supposed to go into effect when we've reached a 70% vaccination rate among seniors 65 and older. We've actually reached 72%. DuPage County has vaccinated 81% with the first dose of its 65 and older population. And almost 58% of the 65 and older population has received both doses here in DuPage County. Unfortunately, our other metrics used to determine our future course have seen significant increases. Thus, we have not been able to move into the bridge program. The overall positivity rate, hospitalization and ICU rate have increased over the last three weeks with the greatest increases coming in the 29, 20 to 39-year-old age group. They have seen a 72% increase in positivity rates within that age group. And in the 40 to 59-year-old age group, and they've seen a 50% increase. On the positive side, DuPage County is currently vaccinating individuals in 1A, 1B and 1B plus. 1B plus are people below age 65 who are immunocompromised. We are now receiving an average of 20,000 doses per week. That's DuPage County Health Department. That doesn't count what the Walgreens, what the OSCOS get separately from the state. That's, those are first doses received by DuPage County Health Department. And while we are receiving 20,000 doses per week, we have the capacity to do 45,000 a week if we have the vaccine. Here in Darien, we've been working to get our homebound population vaccinated. And as of today, we are down to one individual who we are working to get vaccinated. We had Mrs. Novarini and Mrs. Hathaway collecting information from people as they called in who were homebound, who could not get out to get vaccines. And I'm proud to say we have one person, we're down to one person on that list. And we're going to get it, get that one person vaccinated. We're, we find people to go to the house and actually give them the vaccine or to pick them up and take them. And if you know of a homebound individual who has not been vaccinated, please call Diane Novarini here at City Hall in order to provide contact information regarding that individual. Then I'd like to talk just briefly about our 9/11 celebration. As many of you can see, we have a 9/11 flag behind us. It was donated for our use for the remainder of the year from April Padlec. Plans continue to be developed for our commemoration of the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 tragedy. We are working with a group of educators representing our local schools with the goal of involving as many of our local children in the event as possible. And when I say that, I say we have represented from District 63, District 66, District 99 High School, District 86. The only district we haven't heard from is District 61. As noted previously, we will be conducting a first responders parade on Saturday, September 11, beginning at the Jewel Store parking lot and traveling north on Cass to 71st Street. It's very similar route that the Lions Club are proposing tonight for their Fourth of July parade. On Sunday, September, excuse me, this parade will be followed by a community picnic at the Darien Community Park, which will include speakers and recognition of selected individuals. On Sunday, September 12, we'll begin the day with a special running of the Darien Dash, beginning at the Darien Swimming Recreation Club. And following that event, we'll hold a concert at Carriage Greens Country Club that will include performances by choirs from all of our local schools as well as a group called the 144th Guard. We're going to have a lot of other activities that take place within that, that month. We're going to have a proclamation declaring September, the 20th anniversary, you know, that Darien remembers 9/11. We're going to have a number of activities like blue ribbons being tied around trees. And we really have a lot of cooperation from the schools. It's remarkable what these teachers have planned. If I let them run with it, they would just, there's so many things they want to do. So we will get more information out as that, as it's developed. We will be putting out a bit of a program. And again, we'll get that out to residents through our Darien Direct Connect. Maybe we'll even do a flyer over the summer so people know what's coming up in September. And that's my mayor's report. That takes us to our city's clerk report. Joanne?
One item, polling places for the April 6, 2021 consolidated election, open at 6:00 AM tomorrow and they close at 7:00 PM. So please come out and do your civic duty. Thank you.
To the administrative report, Brian?
No report, Mayor.
Takes us to department head information and questions. Any questions for Police Chief Greg Thomas? By the way, Chief Thomas, Saturday I had an opportunity to have, attend a luncheon with two people who live in Aurora. And they have a 29-year-old son who is an officer with the Aurora Police Department. But he came to that department after you left, but he loves working in Aurora and he loves his position as a police officer in that community. I just thought I'd share that with you. Any questions for Mr. Gombeck? Eric?
Yeah, Dan, I know we talked a little bit about this. Now, what's, what's the status of 75th Street? Are they ever going to get that done? I think they're supposed to be back working actually this week, if that's what I read.
Again, the question was in regards to 75th Street and the construction timeline. As asked for the contract, you know, it's a federal, federally funded project as well. In which case they have certain parameters they could follow or not follow. One of them is mobilization. Mobilization typically starts, they will be mobilized in April 4th, 5th. Typically, they really don't have to start till the end of April, May 1st, especially that's when the asphalt plants really tend to open. So they are behind. Again, the reasoning, the reasoning they were behind was because of all the utility conflicts and when they first started out, especially around the Walmart, the Darien Town Center. So based on what I see, I haven't seen the final schedule yet. I would say it's at least another two months out with landscaping. Basically, it's landscaping the paths, the sidewalks slash bike paths. So that's where I see it and the signalization. They started putting up some of the signals already.
Yeah, I think it's critical that people know that's not our project.
No, correct. That is not the city of Darien's project.
If it was our project, it had been done by now.
Thank you for that boost of confidence, Alderman.
You don't have any of these same contractors do any work for the city, are you?
No.
Good.
I think who was all out, there's several different vendors.
Good. Alderman Clistic?
Quick question, but that's a county road though. So it's funded by the federal government?
There's, there's some cost sharing through the county. And whether it's IDOT, the state, usually it's, when it's federal funding involved, it also trickles down to IDOT who overs, who basically disperses the funds.
Okay.
I forgot what the actual shares were.
Okay, so county has a little bit play in that one.
County has all the play. I mean, county runs the job. It's just, you know, with the paperwork, I would submit it back to IDOT for reimbursements.
Yeah, they run that job like they plow the streets. At the same level quality.
Dan, one follow-up. When you mentioned on 75th Street, there's utility conflicts. Can you explain so everybody understands what that means? Because I know we've done projects like on Plainfield Road and we know firsthand that that could cause issues while you're out there. But, you know, plans are engineered and, you know, people know there's utilities. But how, I mean, what is a conflict and how does that come about?
That's probably a great question. A lot of people don't realize that as we all know, the Lyman, state, on Lyman, ComEd has a substation there. Coming out at substation are massive wires that are underground. In some cases, they're referred to as six packs or eight packs. In other words, there's cables within a block that's 16 by 20, 24, 24 by 24 that has cables the size of three inch to four inch diameter. Those cables were running, I believe, where the sidewalk is now or was. All those cables had to get removed and placed in another area. So that was one. And then the gas main, the gas main was another conflict. If you've, I believe the color of the gas main out there was green or brown. It was like an eight-inch pipe. So they had to abandon the old pipe and put in a new pipe. And then again, Ameritech. Now, everybody tries to do the best they can on locating. But when you're dealing with several hundred, if not thousands of feet, you're going to have conflicts where ones crossing each other. And now all of a sudden, that has to be resolved before ComEd or Nycor has to go through. You recall, the phones were even out for a period of time and affected City Hall here because there was some cables from Ameritech that needed to get, they had to be removed also. So, you know, many times a job of that magnitude, especially with the utilities that are involved, there is some logistics. And even when we were doing 75th Street here, I know that I had requested that we start the utilities as soon as possible because utilities always seem to be the lag, if you want to say. You know, and one department has to touch base with the other department, back to engineering, so on and so forth.
So during the design phase, Dan, they have an 80% idea where the utilities actually are or 50%. But until you open the ground and see where they're at, you don't know exactly, you know, if the gas main is, how close it might be. And that leads to maybe some delay.
That's correct. I mean, you say 80%, 80 to mid 80s, I think is a good indication of where the plans are. Plans in relationship to the field are a good conclusion. But then again, if there's a little dip here, a little dip here, that little dip can equate to, you know, a conflict. And storm sewers become in conflict too.
Yeah. All right. Thanks.
Alderman Shower?
Thank you. Yeah, Dan, could you, could you address about the pavement? What we had from a constituent basically saying about the washboard style of it, just to let people know?
Sure. And again, the question is in regards to 75th Street, the paving, the surface, final coat. If you've driven, if you've driven down the road, you will notice that there's bumps. It's referred to, in my opinion, it's referred to as a washboard where you've got the roller, there's several different facets of a roller that's being put on that pavement to attain compaction for the design of that road. According to DuPage County, they had satisfied that. Again, by satisfying that, what happens is that the roller is basically pounding so many beats per minute. And as it beats that asphalt, it basically turns it and almost creates a hill, if you want to say, if it's over rolled. Now, was it over rolled? I couldn't answer that. They had conducted some tests and they said it's within tolerance. Plus, it's the type of mix that they use too.
Anything else for Dan? Yeah, I, I'm again getting complaints from people about the building at 75th, excuse me, at Plainfield and Cass Avenue about why it's taking so long and why aren't we telling people why it's taking so long? Could you just very shortly, I know you've addressed it before, could you just shortly address why it's taken that building so long?
I think part of it is the superintendent that's on the job is a little bit of a novice, you know, for construction. Certain construction needs to be kicked in gear, if you want to say, is probably the best way to put it. So, you know, is there a lack of some of that? Potentially, yes. I do know that between Pedrinos and Dunkin' Donuts, it's a race of who's going to open up first. I was told Pedrinos will be opening up first. So again, two to three weeks is the timeline for both of them to open up. And again, I say that with the most information that I've recently received. So two to three weeks, who will open first, it's to be seen.
Okay.
And Dunkin' Donuts obviously is really, they're in a hurry, but they're not in a hurry because they're currently established. And again, with the COVID, I think it gives them some breathing room, if you want to say.
Dan, if it is behind schedule, which I, I know it is, how long, do you recall how long it is behind schedule? Because I, I think there's, you know, when you see it and we've been over through a long winter and things, people will say, oh, it's way, it's way behind schedule. But is it two months? Do you remember or is it?
It's my opinion. My opinion would be a minimal of two and a half to three months.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Any else, anything else for Dan or Greg? Okay.
Thank you.
It takes us to standing committee reports. Do any of the aldermen have reports for the council? Oh, I'm sorry. I wanted to skip you, Michael. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm anxious. Treasury report warrant number 202123.
That was a test. Yes, this evening I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 202123 in the amount of $116,045.03 from listed funds payroll for the period ended March 25th in the amount of $252,711.80 for a total to be approved of $368,756.83.
Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Now the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Plistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Warrant's been approved. Now we go to standing committee reports. Any of the aldermen have reports? Alderman Kenny?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the police committee will meet on Monday, April 17th at 6 o'clock across the street in the police training room, pending agenda items.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Yes, the next municipal services committee meeting is currently scheduled for Monday, April 26. It will be in council chambers at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sullivan?
The admin finance meeting was canceled tonight. The next admin finance committee will be on Monday, May 3rd at 6:00 PM in the conference room upstairs. And the economic development committee is scheduled to meet on Monday, April 12th at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda related. Anybody in the audience have any questions regarding the agenda? If none, we move to old business. There being none, we move to our consent agenda. And please bear with me. Item A, consideration of a motion granting waiver of the raffle license bond requirement for the Darien Lions Club. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve the annual Fourth of July parade on Monday, July 5th, 2021, beginning at 9:30 AM sponsored by the Darien Lions Club in authorizing the police department to assist in traffic control and authorizing the temporary closure of streets for the Fourth of July parade. And again, that's from the Jewel Parking Lot, North on Cass, down to 71st Street, East on 71st to Clerton Hills Road, South on Clerton Hills Road to Hinsdale South High School. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the professional design services related to the geographic information system or GIS mapping for zoning districts in an amount not to exceed $4,000 and for a contingency in an amount not to exceed $1,000 for additional edits as field identified to update the GIS mapping. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the following Public Works Rear Yard Storm Water Management Projects. Item one is PW Project Fiscal Year 2122, Leonard Drive, Richmond Avenue to 67th to Chestnut Lane. The second is Project Harvest 2928, 2940, 52, 64, 76, 88, 3,000. Harvest Lane, 8589, 8583, Meadow Court, 24, 2941, 2951, 2961 and 2971 in an amount not to exceed 99,000. Three, Bayberry Lane, 7210, 7214, 7218, 7222, Waldem Lane, 1629, 7217, 7213, 7209 in an amount not to exceed 40,883. Item four, Project Downers Grove Drive, 3200, Clifford Drive, 8667, 8655 in an amount not to exceed 87,733. The next project, number five, Bellar Drive, 2961, Meadow Lane, 8356 in an amount not to exceed 30,607. Item six, Clerton Hills Road. Hills Road to Alabama Avenue, in an amount not to exceed 35,500. Item seven, Tamarack Drive, 922, in an amount not to exceed 18,048. Item eight, Glanier Road, 85, 09, in an amount not to exceed 7,842. Item E, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the Mirror to accept a proposal from Precision Pavement Markings Incorporated at the proposed unit prices in an amount not to exceed $34,500 for the 2021 Street Striping Program. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the following private property rear yard storm water management assistance projects. Item 1A, Alabama Avenue and Chestnut Lane, in an amount not to exceed $16,018. The item 2A, Arable Lane, in an amount not to exceed $17,520. Item 3A, Brompton Drive and Brunswick Road and Dartmouth Lane, in an amount not to exceed $4,454. Item 4A, Farmingdale Drive and Glen Lane, in an amount not to exceed, you don't have that in their city cost, $5,419. Item 5A, 71st Street and 72nd Street and Bentley Avenue, in an amount not to exceed 24,605. Item 6A, Willow Creek Lane and Winterberry Lane, in an amount not to exceed $17,084. Item 7A, Iroquois Lane and Sleepy Hollow Lane, in an amount not to exceed $25,386. Item 8, Exner Road and Summit Road, in an amount not to exceed $9,201. Item 9, Country Lane and Walnut Drive, in an amount not to exceed $19,741. And item 10A is Evergreen Lane, in an amount not to exceed $6,412. That's our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. End of the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Penny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Our consent agenda's been approved. It takes us to new business. Item A, consideration of a motion authorizing the removal and replacement of retaining walls, drainage, tree removal, tree planting, grading, and general landscape restoration at the following locations at costs not to exceed $117,301 for Project 1, which is, and Project 2. Project 1 is the 1900 block of Manning Road. Project 2 is Manning Road immediately west from Cottage Lane. Project 3 is $81,040 for the Carmelite Center, the 8400 block of Bailey Road. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions? Alderman Clissack?
Thank you, Mayor. For the Carmelite Center, would that address the issue that the priest had a little year ago? They come in and they had that concern, so that's going to address that, that area, that flooding there. Okay.
That's specifically the reason I think that's on here, that why we approved it. Anything else? Alderman Kenny, did you have your hand up?
No, sir.
No more questions? We have the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Penny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Item A's been approved. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution to waive the competitive bidding process and accept a quote from Unilock Incorporated for the purchase and delivery of the Unilock Sienna Edge Wall, coping block, and Geo Grid at a cost not to exceed $54,250. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kenny. Any questions? If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The item's been approved. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution to reject all bids for the removal and installation of the retaining walls for projects 1 to 3, and award a contract for the removal and installation of the retaining walls for projects 1 to 3 to terrain landscaping contractors in an amount not to exceed $89,800. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Penny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Been approved. Item D, consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance approving the 2021-2022 City of Darien budget. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Shower. I think it should be noted that we had our public hearing on our budget this evening at 7:00. And there were no questions, or questions asked by residents or by the aldermen. Anything you want to bring up? No?
Mayor, we did also put the budget out in our Direct Connect and, you know, all of our social media, just so residents were aware.
Right. Thank you, Brian. Mayor?
I just want to, as the Chair of the Admin Finance Committee, I just want to thank my fellow aldermen, our amazing city staff, our city treasurer, and everyone that has supported him, along with our administrator and mayor, for putting together department heads and everybody. It's an all-hands-on-deck process, and we spent, they spent several weeks and months preparing it. And we, as a city council, had our workshops to review it. And thankfully, you know, we did something, a similar exercise every year, and last year, and then COVID hit, and so many changes had to be made to the budget. So I'm thrilled that we're able to reinstate so many amazing programs and projects, and continue to serve our citizens this next fiscal year. And I encourage all residents to take a peek, see, or at least read the summary pages that were prepared, explaining, you know, the highlights of the budget, and familiarize yourself with how your great tax dollars are spent in Darien.
I'd also like to mention, this is something a lot of people probably don't realize, but this year's budget, as so many of our budgets, was done without any property tax increase, or without any water rate increase. You know, I've been on this council for 24 years, and I don't believe we've ever raised that rate over that 24 years. Yet you hear people say that their taxes are high. If you look at what Darien provides, or the rate you pay, that we're a good deal. We really are. And so I just wanted to mention that, so that word's out there. Okay? We have a motion and a second. Alderman Clissack?
I was going to make a quick comment. A couple of residents came to me about water, and as you mentioned, we didn't raise their rate, but the county did. So they did raise their storm rate. So there might be some confusion with some residents. We'll make sure, maybe the next Darien Connect, that the increase did come from the county, because I did receive a few emails. I just didn't pass them, I have a chance to pass them along, so.
Thank you.
Did they send something to you, Tom, about the increase? Was it on the bill? I don't, I saw something, but I don't remember how they advised residents.
Yes, I received a document from the county. A few residents just brought to my attention that the bill had increased, so I just sent them copies of whatever I received from the county. I can refer that to you.
Just to clarify that a little bit, Brian, they did send, it wasn't closed in the bill, I believe it was November or December, indicating that effective January 1st, they were going to be raising it some nominal amount, a dollar this or a dollar that. So that did go to all the residents in that bill prior to the start of the year.
Okay, thanks.
And I think what people tend to forget, too, is that the levy stays the same, the rate. And when people's homes sell, and the property values go up, that's, and that's when they, when they see, you know, oh, my taxes went up. Well, that's because your property value went up. And they use that as a multiplier to figure it out.
And in those cases, again, as you mentioned, we, we have a levy, so we ask for a dollar amount. So if somebody's tax goes up because of a sale, or remodeling, or for whatever reason, somebody else's will go down, because we're still collecting the same amount of money.
You know, what a lot of, you know, a lot of people ask me, how did you guys fare, you know, with COVID last year? As Mary mentioned, we created a budget last year, and then COVID hit. And we actually slashed $3.6 million from that budget. All of our capital projects went away. We came out of it, knock on wood, pretty good. We did. And we did get some CARES Act money from the federal government, and we got some increases in motor fuel tax funds. And this year, we're back to where we are allowed to. We're going to be spending on rear yard drainage projects, like you've heard us mention tonight. We'll be back doing our road projects. So because of our fiscal conservativeness, we've been able to make it through a tough year. And my hope is that this will be a year for us where we'll be able to complete some of the things that we had to cut last year. So a lot of thanks to staff for that as well. All right, we have a motion and a second. Alderman Vaughn? Oh, you're voting. All in favor. Oh, we have a roll. I thought we'd just do it unanimously.
Sullivan?
Go ahead.
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Penny?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
It's been approved. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of agenda. Any of the aldermen have anything they want to add? Alderman Kenny?
Just maybe we can give a little clarification for people watching at home, that we've changed garbage contracts, yes? Or the, or not, we're going to contract, did waste management buy out?
Yeah, we did put that in Direct Connect, and, and...
And the sticker price went up effective April 1st?
Yeah, we, you know, the multi-year contract, I think it was, you know, I don't remember, it was six cents. You know, we, we did put that specifically in there. And periodically, you know, in the garbage company world, this happens. The bigger companies buy out some of these other contrast municipalities. We are in the, in the last year of the contract, so we will be, you know, coming to the council about the bidding process, the services and things. And we'll do that probably within the next couple of months, so we could start preparing.
Anyone else? You know, I just wanted to mention, tonight we have Bill Christiansen and Mike Falco here. They're the chairpeople for the Lions Club Fourth of July Parade. And these two gentlemen will also be running our 9/11 Parade in September. So many thanks to the Darien Lions Club. And, you know, Bill came to me about a month or so ago and wanted to know if we were going to be able to do this this year. And I told him, I think this is the year that we're able, will be able to do it. And I'm sure Bill and Mike both know that there, we don't know what the future's going to hold. If these numbers go up, that could impact things. But I think they're going to do everything possible to make sure that we have a very successful July 4th Parade. And I'll tell you guys, I really look forward to our community having a July 4th Parade this year. So many thanks to you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, as, during the meeting, I did receive an email actually from a resident asking why the parade is not on Sunday, the 4th, and why it's on the 5th. And I know the Lions Club mentioned, because that's a Sunday. But is that typical, if it falls on a weekend, that it's pushed somewhere? I don't recall.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Bill Christiansen. So two things. The 5th is the recognized federal holiday, if you will. And so that's why we're having the, the parade on the 5th. Plus, also, I believe it's St. John's Lutheran Church is along the parade route, right there on Cass Avenue. And we really don't want to interrupt anything as far as services go for the, for the church there.
Great, thank you. I'll let the resident know. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else? All right, tomorrow's Election Day, and I would ask that everybody be conscious of the fact that we have elections at almost every level. We have township elections, we have school board, high school, as well as elementary. We have park district, and we have city. And, you know, if you're concerned where your tax dollars are going, tomorrow you're going to be voting for people who will determine where your tax dollars are going. So I ask you, if you haven't voted, that you could seriously consider getting out and casting your ballot tomorrow, for a very important election. I know that it's not presidential, it's not the governor, and it's not the mayor or, but it's, it is a critical election. And I just ask all of you to give thought to going out and casting your ballot tomorrow. And many thanks, and good luck to all the candidates who are running for office tomorrow. Anything else? If not, motion to adjourn. Alderman Vaughn, seconded by Alderman Shower. All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.